At this time, we're going to reconvene our regular board meeting and turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Board Chair. We've come out a closed session. We were talking about the litigation, Benton County Board of Commissioners versus Nadine Inman, the Auditor of Treasure. And we've talked about, and I'm going to be presenting a motion to the Board, recommending a motion to approve a settlement agreement that we've reached with Ms. Inman regarding the litigation. Just to kind of lay the background for the Board again and anyone listening, there had been an investigation done by the Sherburne County Sheriff's Department regarding some allegations relating to the residency of Ms. Inman. As you know, by law, someone seeking a position of an elected county position, one of the officers, auditor, treasurer, attorney, sheriff, et cetera, they're required to file an affidavit of candidacy that indicates that as of 30 days prior to the election, they reside within the county. And then during the period in which they are an elected official, they are to reside within the county. And facts developed by Sherburne County at least raised an issue about that regarding Ms. Inman, that she didn't actually reside in the county and was residing somewhere else for a period of time. So the Board pursuant to its duties and its obligations, you have a duty to declare and fill any vacancies, and if someone isn't a resident, that's a vacancy. You initiated this litigation to actually determine residency. That's really what it was all about. And then asked for a declaration of the court to make findings about whether she was a resident, and if she wasn't, declare the office vacant and allow you to appoint. Ms. Inman, through her lawyer, answered and asserted some counterclaims against the county, claiming you interfered with her ability to do her duties, retaliated against her, engaged in a conspiracy, and defamed her. We commenced some discovery. We asked a lot of questions relating to residency, 80 admissions, 81, 20 or so interrogatories, requests, a lot of documents. And prior to their time to answer, Ms. Inman, through her attorney, proposed a resolution, which I'm going to propose to the Board that they accept. We've drafted up an agreement. There are a couple of copies on the table there that you've gone over with me. Literally, right before I came in here today, I was on the phone with Ms. Inman's lawyer, and the agreement you have in front of you, there'll be two changes to it made. And I just want to go over. I've gone over the agreement. I want to just summarize it briefly one more time before I ask for a motion. The agreement itself is entitled settlement agreement, release of all claims, and agreement not to seek reelection as the Benton County Auditor of Treasure. The essential portions of the agreement really are as follows. First, Ms. Inman agrees not to run as a candidate for the position of Benton County Auditor of Treasure in the 2022 election. She had put her name in. She is a candidate. She is on the ballot for August 9, but she's agreeing she's not going to run as a candidate any further. She agrees she's not going to campaign for the position. She agrees to attempt to help, and that's where there'll be some change to paragraph one, where it says agrees to assist. In the third line, it will say agrees to help to attempt to ensure her name is not listed on the November ballot. That's really set by Minnesota law. That's why we framed it that way. And I think importantly, and then this is where the second change in paragraph one is, on the fourth line where it says and, it'll then say if Inman is listed on the ballot in November, which we don't know if that'll happen, agrees that she would not accept the position and would not take any oath of office if so elected. The last part is important because the last thing to qualify is you must take an oath of office, as you know. And if you don't take it, you are not seated. In paragraph two, in order for the public to, you know, we are, I am proposing this agreement because I believe, and I think the Board believes, that this agreement is in the interest of the public. In paragraph two, there is basically, to summarize what's being said there, is Ms. Inman agrees that she's going to take reasonable actions to alert members of the public to the fact that she is withdrawing from the race. In fact, it goes so far as to say that she will contact the press through a press release or otherwise on the same day you approve this agreement to announce to the press the terms of paragraphs one and two, that she's not going to run, she won't accept, she won't take the oath of office. The Benton County Board of Commissioners is agreeing that it will take no further steps to determine the residency issue in court and that Ms. Inman will serve out the remainder of her term. That's the basic portion of paragraph three. Paragraph four, Ms. Inman is also agreeing, in addition to not to seek election for the 2022, 2023 through 2026 term, that she will not seek nor would she accept any future employment with Benton County or any elected position in the county. In paragraph seven, where there's a couple of more changes, so I want to point that out to what you have in front of you, that's what we basically call a non-disparagement clause, where the parties agree they're not going to disparage one another. And the change that is going to be in, from the agreement you have in front of you is on the third line, where we basically say we agree, both parties agree not to disparage the other party, where there's a comma, it will say now or in the future. And then we agree what disparagement means, and then we also, there's a change in the last two lines, in the second and last line where it says statements of their opinion as to the residency of Inman. The Board and the Administrator agree, and they're not going to make statements about that. This agreement basically speaks for itself. There'll be a period after the word Inman. We deem that during the period of her term as a Benton County Auditor of Treasure, the portion that's going to be pulled out is a little ambiguous. The remainder of the provisions are basically things we put in all agreements by law, you know. And the parties are agreeing that the pending lawsuit will be dismissed with prejudice, which means can't be brought again with no cost, dispersments, or attorney fees to either party, meaning everyone bears the expenses they have. And that's the summary. Do any member of the Board have any questions? Then if not, I would propose that the Board make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Ms. Inman of the pending litigation as presented by counsel with the changes on the proposed agreement as read by counsel, and authorize the Board Chair to sign the agreement on behalf of Benton County.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to what our attorney, Mr. Anderson, just said, wrote or read into the record. Does that work?
Yes.
That'll work. So we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Johnson, second it. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? Now to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner Shingin.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Monty?
All that remains is adjourn County Board.
Yep. At this time, we're adjourning the County Board at 11:18, and we're going to recess.
Reconvene ditch authority.
Ah, ditch authority. There's a lot on.
You can recess if you wanted to.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot on my plate today. Okay. Now, we're going to conduct a public hea-- we will now open the public hearing for ditch number nine. Before the opening of public comment, we will first hear from the county staff. Chris, take it over, please.
All right. So the purpose of today's public hearing is to complete the reestablishment of drainage On June 7, 2022, there was an order to appoint an engineer and order the reestablishment of records. On April 19, 2022, we discovered we needed to do this because of a repair petition. We did have a repair report. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We had a reestablishment report that was accepted by the Drainage Authority on June 1st, or June 21st, I apologize, 2022. Notices went out to landowners, but I had a brief conversation with someone before this, and I understand that the notices said repair report when the notices should have said reestablishment report. So we will still hear a presentation from our engineer, Garrett, on Houston Engineering, but this is for the reestablishment of drainage records and the report associated with that. So everybody received notice from what we can tell, but the purpose of the hearing needs to be clarified, that it's for the reestablishment of drainage records. I just want to make that note. If you'd like to continue, it looks like Garrett is ready to give his presentation on that report.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Garrett.
Hello, Board of Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. As Chris mentioned, this presentation is outlining the report we prepared. It's a part of the record reestablishment of Benton County Ditch Nine to make sure the records are in order to address the repair petition that was received by the county. Once again, and I'll just do a quick high-level overview of this, as we previously spoke about it on CD3, just a reminder that for the purpose of this proceeding, the Board of Commissioners is acting as the drainage authority under Minnesota State Statute 103E and is responsible for acting in the best interest of the landowners who are benefited by the public drainage system, and that redetermination of benefits was recently completed, and that's helping inform how management proceeds forward. And as we mentioned, there was a valid petition for repair. Now, the purpose for these proceedings, in that they precede the repair, is it's very important when looking at the comprehensive management of drainage systems, that the Drainage Authority undertake the responsibilities to keep accurate records of the drainage system to better inform what is and is not within the jurisdiction of the Drainage Authority. So often throughout the state, we're finding is the need to either correct or reestablish the public drainage system records consistent with Minnesota State Statute, because those records inform the area that's to be inspected, helps us understand what type of financing is available to complete work on the drainage system, helps navigate the policy and permitting side of things, particularly when it comes to determining whether some repair or improvement and the regulatory considerations of those two actions. And ultimately, that can lead up to a project that would be outlined in a repair report. So while there was a petition for repair, and a repair report is pending, will be developed following this proceeding, this proceeding, as Chris identified, is for the record reestablishment of County Ditch Nine. That record reestablishment occurs under Minnesota Statute 103E 101 subdivision 4A, and this is your standard of decision for today, that if upon review of your records, you find that they are either lost, destroyed, or otherwise incomplete, the Drainage Authority may order, reestablish records defining the alignment, cross-section, profile, hydraulic pressure locations, materials, dimensions, and elevations, or right-of-way of the drainage system as originally constructed or subsequently improved. And for the purpose of this presentation, I'll be calling that the ACIC. That's the as constructed and subsequently improved condition. So that's really the drive of this report, is to determine what that as constructed or ACIC is, so that the Drainage Authority is more informed on what this is exactly that they are managing on behalf of the benefit of landowners. So as I mentioned, record reestablishment is defining where the Drainage Authority can do work, that really the reach of the Drainage Authority is limited to the public drainage system, and defines the maximum level of repair, which is consistent with the ASBIL, and therefore what quality of drainage can be provided. Anything beyond that ACIC or beyond the ASBIL is considered an improvement under statute and has other regulatory implications. So it's important to know what that threshold is when making these decisions on repair, because anything beyond a repair is not necessarily exempt from or veterinary permitting and other federal regulations. You may have to complete wetland mitigation for type 3, for all type of wetlands, not just type 3.45, so you can lose those exemptions that we talked about with CD3 earlier today. And then you also have to evaluate potential downstream impacts if you are potentially changing the capacity of the drainage system beyond its originally constructed condition. So as part of this process, we go through, we investigate the historical development of the system, so we look at historic records that are available, if any. We complete a field survey of the existing conditions of the drainage system and where it's believed to be. And then through that, we establish that as constructed and subsequently improved condition, where we're looking at primarily the alignment and the grade or slope and depth of the drainage system, and then further expand on that, describe the right-of-way of the system, and all of that is detailed in an entry. Quick overview of County Ditch Nine. It's located within the Maywood and Glendarrado Townships. It's approximately 5.6 miles of open channel ditch established in 1905, consisting of a main trunk that flows north to south to the Saint Francis River, and it has one tributary branch. It is also located downstream of County Ditches 12 and 14. There was a small repair identified in the record that was completed in 2004, and that was a repair to the upstream end of CD9, as well as a little bit of the downstream end of CD14, so that's the northern end of this drainage plan. Otherwise, there were no other major repairs or activities documented of like a tip-to-tail repair on the drainage system. That does not mean that work was ever completed on the drainage system. It may have been completed over time, either by the county or by private landowners, but just recognizing that the record or the documentation available does not detail any of that. As you know, due to a recent redetermination of benefits, these drainage systems have benefited landowners, and those are the parties who are able to initiate action under Minnesota State Statute 103E. They're the people who run, who own, or pay for the drainage system and who the Drainage Authority acts on behalf of. The surface drainage area for County Ditch Nine is approximately 2,500 acres, and that does not include those areas first drained by County Ditches 12 or 14. The original 1905 viewers' report identifies 572 benefiting acres, and that's the number you'll see reflected in our report. And I'll just note that a redetermination was completed since the report was completed, and that has updated the total area benefiting the drainage system to 2,638 acres of benefited land. And that change is often due to change in the viewing process of recognizing modern drainage practices, such as straying tile and other private surface drainage structures. And then just noting that when we include CD12 and 14, the drainage area expands to, you know, over 7,000 acres that flow through this County Ditch Nine. So when we take a look and try to determine that as constructed alignment, we review the established alignment in documents such as the plan of profiles for the establishment of the drainage system. We take a look at aerial historical photography available through various resources online, and then we also take a look at what we find in the field with our field survey. And in these circumstances, or particularly in the case of CD9, we find that the existing alignment is very reflective of that of the as established, with the slight caveat that this is actually an ultra-natural water course. So there are some slight meanders and bend movements along the channel. Then additionally, when doing survey, we complete soil probes to identify the hard bottom of the open channel. So we're looking for what we'll call an interface, or the need of two different types of material. Offered in drainage systems, you'll see accumulated sediment consisting of silts or organic matters, and then underlying will be relatively untouched virgin or hard-packed soils or rocks or cobble, or things representative of the actual natural stream bottom that may have been there when the channel was constructed, or maybe an underlying clay layer or other soil types that differ from that in the accumulated sediment portion. So you can see, as we go through the profiles later, we have these little circles with the crosshair in them that are indicative of soil borings captured along the drainage system. And those are our major component of determining the elevations or grade of the drainage system. So when we take a look at those soil borings, what we're doing is we're completing a statistical analysis, we're basically doing a bunch of fancy math, to figure out if we take the historical design profile, which is usually an arbitrary datum, you know, somebody put a spike in a fence post or a tree, and as you call that 100, and then every elevation is relative to that, we take that relative datum, and we convert it to a mean sea level datum, so a modernizing of that elevation for posterity of the record moving forward. And we do the statistical analysis to try and fit that historical profile to the existing conditions and the soil borings to figure out, was it constructed approximately to plan, or have intervening modifications, you know, changed the grade of the system beyond that? Because really what we're trying to suss out is how was this built and what has happened to it since? In the case of this system, we find that the grade break locations from the historical profile are actually very consistent with where we see grade breaks in the current condition of the drainage system. So therefore, we use those grade break locations to provide best-fit lines in those relative reaches of the profile, even though there wasn't a great fit of the soil borings to those. However, as we go through the profiles, we see that they're pretty darn close. But then Branch One actually had a good fit of the zone, design profile with the datum adjustment of the historical profile, and that's likely because Branch One seems to be relatively untouched at the time of construction, whereas the main trunk, as I noted, is an ultra-natural water course, so it may have aggravated and degraded, or just naturally accumulated or scoured away sediment. So we're just going to peruse through a couple of these plan and profile sheets here quick, which are included in the report, just identifying what we're recommending as this ACIC alignment and profile. Here again, I'll just note these soil borings are very close to what we're recommending as the ACIC profile, but that profile is a best-fit line and not representative of that historical design grade. As we go through here, you'll note there are areas of some accumulated sediment, maybe some culverts that are a little above grade. The purpose of the report is not necessarily to recommend repairs. We can identify whether or not preparing a repair report is recommended, but this is really just a matter of making sure we have the record straight to make those informed decisions on the management of the system moving forward. So we started at the downstream end or the southern end of the main trunk, and we're moving upstream now, and you'll see we have again one of these areas where now the existing profile dips below a little bit what we're going to recommend as an as constructed profile. And there's a little bit of an undulation along the way, some culverts. This one right here on County Road 7 was replaced a while back. They used to go, you know, directly south and then west, and now there is a culvert going diagonally across the intersection, and there's documentation of that that was included in the record reestablishment as well. It's nice to see that that culvert lines up with our recommended profile, so that that is at an acceptable grade and capacity, or likely to be an acceptable capacity when we prepare a repair report on the system. You can see this, as we get to the middle portion of the main trunk here, that we do have some more accumulated sediment that we're showing in the plan of profile, which may be why there is a petition for repair, in addition to some of these slightly elevated road crossings that would be evaluated in a repair report, particularly as we move towards the upstream end of the system, where you can see some of these other culverts are perched above that recommended as constructed elevation. And again, right here at the very upstream end, I'll note, you know, on the right-hand side of the screen, we see the end of Benton County Ditch Nine, which is also the start of Benton County Ditch 14. And that record reestablishment on 14 has already been completed and adopted by the Drainage Authority, so now we're working on getting the records in order on CD9 before any other action is undertaken on either of these. Then just a real quick look at Branch One, and here we can see those soil borings related to the historic design profile with the datum adjustment down, which provides a pretty good fit. The condition of Branch One is heavily degraded. It's got heavy vegetation and accumulated sediment in it. Particularly, this upstream portion is almost difficult to discern its existence on the landscape today. As I noted, there are some culverts along the drainage system that are higher than that as constructed condition and its recommended. Why did that happen? There could be a number of factors. Number one, some roads simply weren't present in those locations when the system was established in 1905 or were constructed after the fact. And depending on when they were constructed, over the years, sediment may have accumulated within the channel, whether it's, you know, solid or organic, you know, whatever drove the elevation decision on behalf of whoever owns the crossing, they made their best determination of the correct elevation to install, but may not have had the drainage system record or done the, you know, field investigation that's needed in these processes to find that correct elevation. So oftentimes, we'll see that these new or replacement culverts are placed on top of existing sediment, so long as it's supportive, rather than burying a pipe to some designed elevation and having it fill in almost immediately with the material. So that's often the story we see behind how some of these culverts are above profile, particularly more recent ones. Another important consideration on these drainage systems is their right-of-way. Right-of-way is critical because it's the area that the Drainage Authority uses to access and complete work on the drainage system. The right-of-way is not a public right-of-way for, you know, public recreational use or anything like that. It's for the business of the Drainage Authority. So Drainage Authority staff, as they're assigned, can use the right-of-way to complete inspection, do the survey, or maintenance activities such as mowing, tree suppression, removal of material, and it's also the area used to place spoil material for either the construction or the repair or minor maintenance activities on the drainage system. So it's important for landowners to recognize that right-of-way, as well as keep it clear of obstructions or permanent structures that would prohibit the access of the Drainage Authority to complete their business. The right-of-way of the drainage system, the damages for it were paid at the establishment of the drainage system, and those damages are for the one-time and perpetual use of the area. So so long as the activities completed are consistent with the repair or maintenance on the drainage system and are confined with that existing right-of-way, there's no need for permanent damages to be paid again. If there's a need to go outside the right-of-way, or some extenuating circumstance such as, you know, damaging of crops, the Drainage Authority may consider the awarding of one-time damages or repair activity for other construction activities that disturb those kind of one-time features like agricultural crop destruction. So it's not just the channel itself, but it's also the area adjacent to it that's needed for wasting spoils. So when we take a look at CD9, we have right-of-way width. This is based on, centered on the channel. So this lower end, we see 100 feet, so that's 50 feet either side of the center of the channel. And of course, as you go further upstream, it tends to get narrower, with the caveat that when it does get deeper, if you have an upland area, you may have an original cut that was deeper, and that's why you might see some wider widths up there. But in this case, it does get narrower as you go upstream, and then Branch One is actually a fair bit higher than the main trunk and smaller, so there we see a 6-foot right-of-way width there. So again, that's 30 feet either side of the center line of Branch One. So our recommendation, based on the information that I presented today, is that the Drainage Authority order the reestablishment of the public drainage system record following Minnesota Statute 103E subdivision 101. And then the Drainage Authority then continue with the preparation of a repair report consistent with Minnesota Statute to address the valid repair petition that was received on the drainage system. So at this time, I'll accept any questions and turn the meeting back over to the Board.
Any questions for Garrett at this time? Chris, anything to add?
No. I will say that, yeah, the reestablishment report has been published on our website for out there, for anybody. has been published on our website for out there for anybody to view. It's available by request to have somebody print it off, so.
Commissioner Pop.
So he was referencing to culvert on County Road 4, I believe? It was too high, will let have to be replaced, center lowered?
Yeah, when we get to the repair portion of that, we'll have to look at that and see what it is. So that's, I think it's a fairly large concrete culvert. It's, we'd be rather expensive to repair, so.
Doesn't do any good to lower the ditch if the culvert's too high.
Okay, we'll now open the public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to adjust the county board on ditch 9, just come to the podium and give us your name and address, please, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Sorry, sorry, it was such a delay for you.
It's not a problem. It's an important issue, so thanks for hearing us. My name is David Beeler. I live at 1681955th Street Northeast in Foley. I'm here as an interested party because I own the middle to the southern part of Section 34 in Maywood. Let me let you visualize that. Maywood Cemetery, I own to the east and south, all the way to County Road 51.
Thank you, Garrett.
I'm glad you're hearing this, but there's a couple of things I need to tell you. First of all, you don't have valid notice here. This was not noticed as a record reestablishment. You don't have the authority to go forward on doing what was just asked. It was noticed as the public hearing to determine whether or not to order the repair of County Roads 9. And it said that there was a repair report online, and there's not. And so just from that standpoint, I could sit down. But I want to give you, if you permit me, just a couple of minutes of perspective that I hope you think about as, in terms of, as you go forward and whether you really want to go forward on this particular ditch. Let me give you my perspective. Because I think actually what's going on here, if this would continue, has a bit of a faulty premise. I think it's based on an attempt to shift the cost from people who want to expand their farming footprint to a lot of landowners who don't see that as a benefit, much less an increase in their value. And so thus, it wouldn't really fit in, in your discretion, as saying it's for the common good of that authority. My perspective, I was born and raised a dairy farmer here in Foley, four miles north. My grandfather owned the property that I just described. And it was sold off after he died, but back in 2008, I got a chance to buy 40 of the acres and bought it back, get it back in the family. So I've known, my point is, I've known this property all my life. It was always a wetland, what we're talking about right south. It was always a wetland. There was never an attempt to expand the farming footprint there. I don't farm any of the land. I don't see any benefit to my 40 acres of farming. In fact, I've kind of tried to make it a reserve to, in essence, try to repair this property because I think it was used, sort of inappropriately. It was even used to try to pull Class 5 out for a while. I'm just trying to bring it back, you know? And I'm lucky enough to be able to do that. I don't need the farming income. I grew up the son of a dairy farmer, as I said, but also a man. And this is important because it gives me a perspective, who was on the Benton County Soil and Water Conservation District for 30 years. He was particularly interested in the lack of attention to topsoil erosion and fought back any attempts to cut down the trees. And now, you know, they turn them into irrigation sites now. My dad would be truly rolling over in his grave to see that. But he was really concerned about topsoil. That's gonna come as a point that I make shortly. And finally, I was a trial lawyer for 35 years. I tried lawsuits for 35 years before I came back to Foley. But the point there is I tried to see, you know, from my own perspective, what's good evidence, what's speculation, and what's missing? So if I put all those perspectives together, they goes to what I said. I think this is really an attempt to increase the amount of land available for the petitioner and people who want to increase their farm footprint at the benefit of others who don't see that. The technical memo that Chris spoke of, and Chris Byrd, I've talked with him a couple of times. It's nice to meet you in person. I've talked with him by phone. It speaks of repairing things back to the way they were in either 1905 or 1916. It admits you don't have an as-built. So it's amount of speculation here to try to say, okay, we're gonna put it back to the way it was. What's missing, though? There has been no attempt to try to say how much farmland and what was the condition of the farmland that that original, we call it Collier Creek, we didn't call it ditch 9 back then. What was Collier Creek servicing? And how much more now farmland, tillable farmland, is being used on that? And how much wetland has been decreased in this whole area? The whole point being, you can probably guess where I'm going. Yeah, it's pretty clear to me that that creek has filled up some. But there's been no attempt to say it's, could have come from the topsoil erosion of all of the increased farming. And so if you think for a second, what are we doing here? We are benefiting, we are saying that it's an increase in value to increase the footprint of farmland. That's what they're trying to say. My land should be taxed here because it increases the potential benefit as farmland, when it in fact is an increased farmland footprint that may well be leading to the need to dredge it. It's a vicious circle that I think you need to really consider as something that hasn't been looked at. Finally, your project, from a personal perspective, it's not going to increase my value at all, despite attempts by consultants to try to assert that there's a value increase. It's a wetland surrounding a cemetery. Putting a deeper ditch through it is not going to change that it's a wetland surrounding a cemetery. It's not going to increase my farmland, which there isn't any. And it's not going to benefit my wetland. Finally, I don't see where any alternatives have been considered. I don't know where there's an attempt to say, look, we've identified three or four bottlenecks, and maybe we can use explosives or maybe we can just get at those. I've heard before there were beaver dams downstream of where I was that were attempted to be corrected. I just haven't seen any of those sort of projects. And I haven't seen the farmers themselves say what they're tiling. You know, my dad, we took it upon ourselves to solve our own issue. We built our own waterway, like refuge, in order for draining. I don't see any of those attempts here. So I don't think it's a collective benefit. And I'd ask you to take that perspective as you work forward.
Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to approach the board on ditch 9?
Commissioner Heinrich, if you might interject.
Sure, sure, go ahead, Michelle.
All right. Chris and I learned of the improper notice immediately before this hearing, after he was provided with that notice. And we did have discussion and remedy the notice issue. What we are suggesting after today's hearing is that it be continued, the public hearing portion, until the next regular board meeting so that we can send out corrected notices.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Michelle. Appreciate it. Okay, sir, go ahead.
Todd Brooks, 6656175th Avenue, Northeast Foley. That would be, I believe, Maywood Township 23, I believe. The culvert that we're speaking of on County Road Number 4. I live just west and north of that, within half mile. That is the wetland to the north of there. And I've been there for about 20 years, and that's always been a wetland. So I would be on the very top part, right by that little branch that comes off, I believe. But I know my water doesn't flow that way, which, that's the way it would have to flow. It'd have to flow north to get into what we're talking about here. And then just to run some numbers by you, I figure I got 500 feet of frontage, or 820 feet of frontage. And the bill I got, the estimated bill was gonna be, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I know it was over $3,600. So that's $4.39 a foot that you want me to tax assessments or whatever. And if you look at a different perspective, you take $3,600 divided by 34.5 acres, that's $104.34 an acre. So I don't see how this is gonna benefit me whatsoever. And I do not, it also said the letter, I would get like an extra two acres. What's, the wetlands that I have on my tillable acres will always be wetlands because that water isn't gonna make it to this ditch 9. It's on the east side, not the west side, so. Any questions for me?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else out there? Final call. CNN public comment period is now closed. The board will now have time for questions of staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, public comment portion is closed. Any questions or comments from the board members?
Chris? Yeah, just a point of clarification. I guess we are going to continue the hearing. That's what we're recommending. So maybe, Michelle, correct me, is we can close the public hearing now? We'll reopen it? Or do we need to keep the public comment to open technically?
You can close currently the public hearing and then reopen it at that.
Next to me. Which, also add for public or anybody that watches this later, we will accept written comments mailed to us that's received prior to the next board meeting. So that's always an option to the public, too. If they can't be in person, they can mail in or drop off written comments that will be read into the record.
Emails too, Chris?
Um, I suppose, yeah. If I get an email, I'll print it off and read that into the permanent record. I would like to add, you know, commissioners, you have the benefit of that recent work session that we had where we discussed ditches that maybe the public is not aware of, where we discussed additional work regarding wetlands. And that's something that comes in completion of the repair report process that would theoretically. But I just maybe thought, but that was worth noting that, you know, we have had that discussion kind of as a staff with the board, that we do recognize that there's probably needs to be some additional work to look at the wetlands along this county ditch. I know that's something that hasn't been kind of put out there publicly yet. But I thought maybe that was worth noting at this time.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Chris and/or Garrett, I don't know. And David, if you've had an opportunity to have discussions about those specific concerns with Highway or with Garrett, I'm not sure if you've had that opportunity yet for those specific questions. If that's okay, Mr. Chair, if I could just have him answer that.
Go ahead, I'll watch you.
Yeah, just to respond, I've talked with Chris about these concerns. You know, obviously, the additional concerns get to the point of not only, I'm not really concerned about it affecting the wetland, but I haven't seen the scope of the ditching. And that, so that's a concern that is sort of not ripe for me to comment on. But the second one relates to the fact, something I didn't even know, that there was a road that was put in that may have contributed to the additional sediment. Well, that raises a whole nother factor of whether this commission should be thinking about making landowners pay for something that was caused by, you know, circumstances out of their control. Then that's an issue that you have to consider, just as a legal matter, should you be doing. But that's a way of me saying, this is what I would raise in addition, but I.
Sure, okay.
I'll raise it with you now, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kapinski.
And I just want to comment on the last gentleman's last comment. I hope everybody understands that we are held to certain things that we are only allowed to do. And if you want, Michelle can kind of go through what we can do as a ditch authority versus, we have to stay within our parameters and our legal bounds as well, so.
Maybe I'll just add that we did receive a valid repair petition, which kind of initiates and binds us into looking at that. Before we can even say whether repair is necessary or not necessary, we need to know, you know, as close as we can tell, where that original ditch line is. And that's, I think that's kind of brings us to the process that we're in the middle of today, is we can't simply dismiss the repair petition. I think, and Michelle, you could back me up on this, we have legal obligation to investigate that. What we found investigating that repair petition is, we, before now, we didn't know where that bottom is to be able to say, nope, it doesn't need to repair, or yes, it does need to be repaired. Yeah, I just wanted to add those comments.
Mr. Chair, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong. Basically, the bottom line is here, we need to table this to the next meeting to get the proper notifications out, and then the public hearing would be reopened at that time. And we could move on on a potential reestablishment of records. Does that kind of cut into the chase? Okay. So with that, Mr.?
If I may provide just a few comments, if the board is okay to that.
Yes, go ahead, Garrett.
Just regarding the scope of these proceedings, just a quick reminder that this is the record reestablishment report. And the issues raised, while noted and are important, some of those comments fall within the scope of the reformation of benefits and the relative benefit of the drainage system to the land. And some of those fall within the scope of a repair report. So while they are good comments, they may not be germane to the current proceedings, which is more of an evidentiary proceeding on the available record and reestablishing and kind of create that baseline. And then I'll just also note that part of future activities would be landowner engagement on a repair report to make sure those comments are facilitated in the appropriate proceedings at that time.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that.
Just going back on Garrett's just comments, I think there is things that you can do, like a petition or something like that, to have that relooked at. But you gotta, that would be through Chris, correct? Chris?
I think what you're referring to, like we talked about on a previous ditch, petition the Drainage Authority to be removed from the benefited acres. There is a process still spelled out in statute, and I think that's initiated by a petition of that individual landowner.
Yep, thank you. Michelle, how many days do we have to give for this to be on our next meeting? Is it 30 days?
10.
10 days, okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, with that discussion, I'm gonna move to table the reestablishment of records for County Ditch 9 to our next August meeting, which is August 16. Gives us enough time, Michelle, to get the corrected notices out. And at that time, we would entertain moving into opening up the public hearing again.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So everything will be getting mailed out correctly this time, again. Okay, with that, anything else, Chris? We're done, right?
That's all we have for ditches today.